First on the agenda, is it Tony Des...
De Simone.
De Simone. Come on up, Tony. Right there, it's fine. To stay consistent with our, uh, policy when appointing people to the boards, we ask them to come in just so they can introduce themselves to us. Uh, cause a lot of times we don't, we'd like to know all the volunteers and maybe, uh, get a little background and tell us why you're looking for the position. Uh, so it's all yours. Pull that mic towards you a little bit. That'd be great.
My name, my name's Tony De Simone. Um, I was working in culinary arts for, I've been a chef for thirty-six years. And I just recently had a back, um, surgery. So I'm no longer working. I was just looking for something to do. And Charlie, I'm a volunteer at the motorcycle show every year. And Charlie asked me if I was, be interested in joining the committee.
Helping out. Where do you live?
I live in Kingston, fifty-six A Mill Road.
How long you been volunteering for, with the motorcycle? On the Kingston days, what, the motorcycle, uh?
Motorcycle show for the...
Yep.
Uh, probably a good ten years, maybe.
Good.
And I just help out whatever I can, you know? Last year I just took tickets, raffle tickets. So I'm not good on my feet standing at the doorway anymore.
So this is, um, it's for the term, let me see. Yeah, this actually expires November thirtieth, twenty-twenty? So that's less than a year?
Yeah, should I do, should I change that date on there? I wasn't sure. I took it through the Kingston days. The others expired in November of last year, so I made that consistent. Had one full year on it.
Gets through the Kingston days, cause otherwise you'd have to do a two-year appointment then, to make it.
Well, it could be till next year, but they don't do much in the winter. I would say meet in the winter, right? You're having some meetings.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Tony?
I appreciate you, uh, working with the motorcycle clubs and having, organizing that and also helping out.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll pass your, uh, I'll pass your, um, appointment papers around and then you'd be able to take this and go down to see Tammy.
Tammy downstairs?
Yeah, and then, uh, she can get you sworn in, okay?
Alrighty.
You got George on here instead of Don.
Oh, oh, I didn't taste. Do you want me to just fix that?
No, instead of Rich.
Instead of Rich.
It's the whole one, sorry.
It's alright. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's okay, we got enough for four.
Which name you want me to sign?
Just write down.
It's not a check, so it doesn't make that much difference. Thanks, Rich. Tony, thanks for coming in.
Just see the...
Go right down and see Tammy and she'll take care of you.
Going the back door downstairs?
Or you just go downstairs?
You're not the elevator.
On the elevator? Alright.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, Scott and Terry. Evening.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Great.
I'm Terry, this is Scott.
Okay, we, we invited you guys in, um, to talk about the, uh, agreement and release of liability. And to discuss our feedback from our town attorney. I guess he took a look at the liability and his, his suggestion was to, so that we ensure that the project, I don't know, has anybody spoken to you about it?
Not the reply yet.
Phil, did you talk to him after we discussed it last week? No?
No, he said you wanted to come in.
Okay. Um, the discussion was with our attorney, was to... He, he said, first of all, he said, why, why would we enter into an agreement like that? Why don't we just have the, um, the adjustments made prior to issuing an occupancy permit? And, uh, the discussion with the board was that, um, difficult time of year to make those alterations. I guess we were told that you had retained a paving company to address. Place a deposit with them to, and you're gonna, you wanted to address it in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
So you were looking to get in there now, right? Um, and his, his recommendation was that, uh, to require a bond. So that's why we invited you guys to come in and discuss it. Uh, the purpose of the bond would be to ensure that, that, which is not unusual, um, it, it typically happens when we have, um, like somebody's doing a subdivision or something like that, needs to put in a road and we, you know, we require a bond, make sure that it actually gets done. Um, so that, that's what the discussion was and that's why we asked you to come in. What's your, I think Dennis had, uh, I think Dennis had put an amount on it, didn't he?
Yeah, do you still have that in your packet? I know a couple of them are still there.
Dennis, our town engineer, have you met with him?
Yes.
Okay. I think his number is twenty-two thousand.
Everybody does it. I think I just left him for the last week.
Okay. It was twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars was the estimated cost for you guys to make that improvement. How would you feel about putting up a, a, a bond to ensure that the changes were made?
Okay. What percentage are we talking here? Cause we've already...
Just pull the mic close to you.
What percentage of the bond, would the bond be? And we have already spent eight thousand to our paving person, which we can't pave until the spring because of the delays, so...
How much have you paid him?
Eight thousand already, so he's sitting on that until the spring.
So you gave him what, a deposit?
Oh, we gave him eight thousand.
A deposit to put it on the...
Yeah.
The thing? On his schedule?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, who, what company are you dealing with on pavement?
Penn Tucket.
Need to get the microphone.
Oh, Penn Tucket, pavers.
Okay.
And landscaping.
I assume they gave you a receipt and have they got a date scheduled for it?
Um, they're waiting to find out when we're okay with the occupancy to start the work on it. Or we're getting okay...
Yeah, the okay, on the plan for our driveway.
Yeah, the, the plan design, cause we have to take some material off the top and add some material on the bottom and make a wider radius. So, once that gets done, then we can set a date. But all of it's based on the, you know, it getting warmer and we're waiting for the weather to change. So it's...
Okay, so are they doing the complete job? They moving the material, they're, they're grading out the driveway and then they're gonna surface it?
Uh, um, we brought with us our excavator.
We have a separate excavation guy depending on how much work we had to do, depending on the grade. We have our excavation guy here who can do more depending on what exactly needs to be done.
He did the initial, Steven did the initial cut. And, and where we didn't get a chance to finish it.
Um, it's estimated to be what right now, fifteen percent grade?
Yes, so it came in at sixteen point one.
And the grade was, uh, according to our regulations, the current regulation is ten?
Yes.
Ten percent?
Yeah.
And there was discussion that that's not viable or feasible?
Well, the issue was when this subdivision went into effect in the late seventies and these guys were operating off of the assumption from that subdivision paperwork that fifteen percent is what the grade had to be. Obviously, they became aware of the fact that the new regulation is ten percent. And the agreement, and as I'm seeing here on the paperwork is the happy medium is we get to twelve percent for the driveway. That made the fire department happy, um, and that also brought us into all the radius.
Twelve and a half, I think, was the agreement.
Okay. But, yeah, so that's what we got to make it work with this, so twelve and a half.
Yeah, I mean, I see Dennis's estimate. I don't really see... I don't know, I didn't see anything that said that. Oh, is it? Okay.
So could I ask, has your excavator seen the plans or talked with the Dennis? And is he in agreement with the estimate that Dennis provided?
We gave a copy to Steven. I don't know if you wanna ask?
They're talking money-wise cost.
Oh, the cost? We don't know yet.
Don't know what?
The cost of doing the work for it, then, uh, I'm not sure what it's gonna be yet.
No, I think what Kevin was asking, has he seen the, the plan?
Yes.
And considers it viable?
It's, well, it's viable, if you wanna...
Yeah.
The, the problem that I, that I see with the plan.
Can you pull the mic to you?
Sorry, the, the problem that I see with the plan is the cut up the top of the hill. Um, the electric's buried there.
The what?
Electric.
An underground conduit.
That's all there, so if...
That's already installed?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we cut too much up there, then obviously all the electric's gotta be redone. Um, if you guys could meet us halfway in the middle type thing, I think we could make it work. Bring the bottom of the driveway up a little bit, cut the top down a little bit, make the bottom a little wider on the opposite side of the driveway. Doesn't quite follow the plan exactly, but I think everything would work just fine. Hey, can I... There is a provision in this... And save them for a load of money. Excavate, install, backfill, schedule eighty conduit for electric. So there is some factor where there's a number in there for moving the electric down. Did you see this yet? Have you guys seen this? Oh, yes.
Yes.
Well, we've seen the plan. I don't think we've seen anything.
There's a mic.
Sorry. Attorney Caitlin Matese's, um...
Hold it, hold it to you, the mic.
We've seen the plan, but if there's some sort of paperwork that details an estimate, we have not seen that.
I haven't.
Thank you. I mean, nothing is probably on the high side, which is fine. But I mean, the bond is a percent, I don't think it matters.
Who, who did that plan? Dennis did up the estimate for what he thought, the bond estimate.
And the plan, like the plan that you made?
Uh, I believe their surveyor.
The Andrew surveyor?
Andrew, yes. Andrew survey, yep.
Okay. How's the board wish to proceed?
Do you, I guess, I would ask the question, is it your intent, if we sign a conditional with the, with the bond and the release until it's done, do you plan on, actually, do you have the financing and the time to do it this spring? Or is this gonna drag into summer, drag into fall, maybe next year?
Well, no, I mean, we wanna get this done as soon as possible. We wanna pave driveway, we, you know, we want it safe as can be, et cetera. Just the percentage is what we were, thought we had to do versus what you're telling us what we have to do is the issue and we're trying to decide exactly, you know, the best way to proceed. Cause, and then even when we applied for a permit, a town driveway permit, you guys the next day said that, no, that didn't apply to us, cause we're on a state road. So we're, we're a little confused as to what percentages apply where, especially when we ju- just look up on the state laws that says fifteen percent off a secondary driveway, which is what it is, cause it's a shared driveway. So, as I say, I understand what you're saying, but we're just trying to get the exact facts. It's, it's difficult to maneuver through all of these regulations.
Yeah, and, and I mean, as far as the permitting thing goes, I mean, again, this was such a weird circumstance because it was off of a state road and then you guys are off of a private driveway. So, even for the state to have jurisdiction, they only care about the first ten feet and then it reverts to the town. So if it's any consolation, we've recognized a hole in, you know, the driveway permitting process. We, we did meet out there with the fire department.
Yeah.
Building department.
Yeah.
And...
Two Septembers ago.
Yeah, and we, I mean, I was there. And we all sat on the hill and, and discussed what we were gonna do and, and everybody was in agreement that that would be fine, so...
And that's what you got now?
Yes. So here's where, where my problem lies with this is, we were fine then, why aren't we now? I, I did exactly what they asked me to do and, I mean, I'm, I'm, my hands are washed a bit, but I feel bad for them.
We just wanna make it safe for you, so that if you call nine-one-one, someone's gonna be able to get to your house. And that's the problem. The police didn't feel comfortable in a car to go up your driveway and the fire department did go with an engine. It took some maneuvering, but in an emergency, that's the problem. And we have to sign off because we can't say, no, we're not gonna go to your house.
Well, that's what I meant, Don. We had, it had snowed the, that day. So I have a truck. I wasn't able to go up there, cause we don't live there yet. So after work, I went over, after Don left and I snowblowed on the gravel and cleared it all off. Um, so, once it's cleared, then it's accessible. And then the fire truck was able to come up. There was no bottoming out. As they, they were able to go up, turn around after our meeting, come back down and they didn't have to stop. They did a full turn onto the paved driveway before they hit the state road. But we are planning to make it wider. I mean, we're hauling in and out of there with triaxle dump trucks. We're making the corner all right. We're making the hill all right. And during the meeting, the post office came up and they were horrified cause there was a half a dozen people at the top of the, um, driveway. And they come up and they're actually lower to the ground. Cause that was a concern about the bottoming out. And that's, we're planning on making it a hundred percent better. We haven't had a chance to since this started.
Yeah.
I think, I think they probably would have already had this work done, except for the timing.
Yeah.
Of how the issue came about in late fall. And then now we got into the winter, so the excavation and the paving is something that you can't really do in the winter. Um, but to your question about, you know, finances and actually getting it done, they certainly have no problem financing it and they want it done as soon as possible. Um, so I think, you know, where you're worried that it might drag out, I, I'm pretty sure the first, the first thaw, you're gonna see some people out there getting this done.
I, I don't wanna break the bank for you, but also I've only been a selectman for one year, ten months, four days, and eight hours. And unfortunately, we see everyone has the intent. And then, you know, if you don't hold their feet to the fire somehow, things fall through the crack and then they don't. And I, I get you in bad circumstances because of...
I mean, I just wanna reiterate, we already gave eight thousand to our paving guy.
Yeah.
And then depending on what we need to do, we have extra to do some excavation work too. But we're just trying to figure out the exact, you know, scheme that we wanna agree upon about what we can do.
Would a cap, would a, uh, copy of the deposit satisfy you guys? It shows their intention?
Or i- in a, in a compromise type situation, we have an estimate here for twenty-two thousand. Could they get a bond for fifteen, which is seven less than the estimate and produce the receipt for the eight thousand that's already been paid? And then we kind of meet in the middle. They don't have to spend a little bit extra on a bond for money they've already paid to the paver?
That's sort of trying to come up with a figure that, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm, I wish I was finished with my house. I'm not finished with my house. But I, I know how it is. Everybody's got a handout, just permit fee for this, resource fee for that, and then just bleeding you dry. I don't think, I know you guys didn't do this intentionally. You know, you're not one of our frequent flyers that he's referencing here that seem to come in all the time, like, oh, I just need this one thing. And then they're just trying to knight you as quick as they can. I know you guys aren't trying to do that. I mean, personally, I would feel fine with a copy of the receipt and, you know, whatever the remainder is behind that receipt is, if the board needs to see a bond. But I don't think they need to put the full twenty-two thousand. If they've already got a deposit with it, a paver, Penn Tucker's a known paving company, forty years. They're not fly-by-night operations, so I, I... Is that a motion?
Um, how about, uh, you're, I don't know if you guys realize, but there's a cost ex, cost escalator in the bond of twenty-five percent. So today's cost, real cost, according to Dennis, is eighteen thousand dollars. They've got eight thou, eighteen thousand and thirty dollars. They've got a, hopefully they can produce documentation that they've got eight thousand dollars to their, uh, paving contract, a deposit that to me says ten thousand dollars if you want a hundred percent. I, I'm not in favor of that. I would say five thousand dollars. Good intentions, have it done by July fourth. Or you lose your five thousand dollars. I know, by the way, we're coming after you.
I'll make that into a motion. Five thousand dollars plus, plus the, uh, amount that you supplied to the driveway.
Does somebody wanna second that?
I'll second it.
I guess my only question, why would we go from five when she's all for fifteen?
Well, I, I'll tell you why I think that. From what I heard them say, we sent people out there and they said it was okay. Now, now they're coming back here. They're coming back here, we've already told them once it's okay. And he's telling us he's gotta dig up the electric based upon what we told him was already okay. I have a problem with that. We already said it's okay.
Are you okay with the five thousand?
Yes.
Documentation for the, sorry, I'm looking at you, but...
Yeah, no, it's fine. Yeah, yeah, we have, so basically, we've, I'll get the check from the bank where we've released the money and then we can get the five thousand.
Yeah. Okay. And a timeframe works for you, of July?
I mean, by, I mean, we wanna start this in, you know, when April or May, June, when everything's melted out there, you know?
Groundhog said we got an early spring coming.
Yeah, there we go.
And you will sign the release? Have you seen the release?
Well, how about if we move the, move the date up to sometime in the fall, just in case?
Yeah.
There's, there's an issue, so we don't, don't wanna have to come back in here. I know your intent is to get it done as soon as possible, but...
Sure, things happen, but I, as I said, our intent is as soon as possible, cause we don't, you know, we wanna pave.
By snowfall of...
How about like September thirtieth or something? Is that, is that reasonable?
I mean, the, the worst-case scenario is...
Would you amend your motion to add a September thirtieth?
I would. And, and the worst-case scenario you're gonna get into is the, the grade and where the electric line is buried. So that may be problematic for you. That's, that's why you may need a little extra time.
But have you seen the release to sign in the meantime?
Yeah. It's what I drafted.
Well, I think they, they put it forward, yeah?
I drafted it, yeah.
I don't know, do they make changes and send it back to you? I don't know if they made changes.
He did not, he did not make any changes and send it back to me, no.
Okay.
We just wanna hold it town harmless. If we can't get up that driveway with a fire truck and ambulance to accrue...
Okay, so this, so this is, this talks about less than fourteen percent?
Twelve and a half is, you were correct, I just checked the plan. Cause twelve and a half percent is the...
Is that what the agreement was?
That was the...
Well, if they're gonna try and get the best they can.
No, it's twelve and a half.
Okay.
That was what was agreed.
Okay.
Okay, so are you guys comfortable with me ma- changing this temporary notice agreement of release of liability to reflect the twelve and a half percent grade?
I mean... It's just that the fire truck...
I'm not crazy about it.
No, the fire truck was able to go up there with snow and ice on the driveway, the way it is right now. And we're going to drop it down at least two or three percent more than that. Um, the problem is, is the extra cost going, ripping five feet by the time you hit the...
Yeah, I mean, it's a conduit, because a conduit goes right underneath the top of the driveway, right to the house, and that, that's the issue. That's the, I mean, putting it down like a couple foot or two, we can do that, but going down to...
It's not, it's not just the, the conduit. I mean, the conduit is a problem. But if I take five feet off the top of that hill, then they've gotta continue climbing to their parking sit pot and their turnaround spot. Unless I'm gonna dig out the whole top of the hill and build a retaining wall in front of the house. It just doesn't work. A couple feet, I can hide that and give them a level area to park and turn around. And add a foot to the bottom of the hill. I can do that. Personally, I would like to turn, be level, then climb again, you know? Get your bearings before you climb the next hill. But we can go away with that and just make it a gradual climb in the corner and then climb up. I can change it by three feet without making it a horrible mess.
But what percentage does that get?
I don't know the exact percentage, but I'm telling you what I can cut footage-wise. I could take two off the top, add one to the bottom, whatever that percentage is, and make it look reasonable and be safe.
See, your engineer or your surveyor's already come up with a plan. Our engineer's already come up with an estimate at a con cost, which is the eighteen thousand dollars. And now you're throwing a monkey, you, you know, you, you... I, I don't know why I'm going...
Well, we haven't seen the estimate until just now, so...
It's just the problem is that when you get up to the top, what do you do when you get there? If we, if we cut, I mean, they, they don't have an area much, once you get up to the top, much longer than this room. You know, well, now we gotta climb up five feet there to get to the turnaround? It doesn't really work. Um, it looks great on paper. Much like lots of stuff looks really good on paper, but it doesn't. I mean...
What are you talking about?
Well, I'd like to take, I'd like to take two feet off the top, add a foot to the bottom. And, I mean, I don't know that if we'll be right around twelve and a half. I think we're, might be a little bit more than that, but I, maybe not.
What are you thinking? What do you think it's gonna come in?
Well, I, I would guess that they need to come back with an answer, cause, like I said, their surveyor and our town engineer came up with that. I believe they both think it's doable. Obviously, you're at an unfair disadvantage here, cause you haven't seen that, I guess. So maybe we need to come back again next week. You, you guys have gotta decide that, otherwise you guys have gotta, is that the deal you wanna make? It, it sounds pretty loose-ended to me. You either gotta stick to twelve and a half percent and this, you know, this is the way we're gonna do it or there's gonna be another deal proposed here.
I mean, somebody needs to do the math.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and right now, we're kinda putting you on the spot. I, I understand your contractor's not comfortable, cause he hasn't seen the plan and he hasn't seen the numbers, but... So, maybe one more week needs, need, we need to look at it.
Too much to cut out.
Otherwise, it's just too loose-ended for me to recommend that you guys move forward with it.
That work, next time, back next week?
Yeah, I mean, if we can do, can you do the numbers, what you think will come out to? Once you look at the two feet and the one foot?
Peter.
Yeah, and we can talk to Peter also.
He's already shot all the grades, so just, yeah, we can have a chat with him and just find out what the...
Yep. Maybe get an updated proposal.
So I'll take the motion?
Yeah, I just, we can make that motion and follow through if they need that twelve and a half percent, right? Is that what we're looking for? Make that motion.
I, I would say let's switch our motion. We would like to see twelve and a half percent. Okay, that's what the recommendation is.
If we end up close to them?
If you can come back and tell us what you're gonna be at, we could have the discussion again next week.
Okay.
But I gotta go by what our road agent says. And he's asking, and he's saying the plan said it could go for twelve and a half. So can you take a look and do your best to get that?
And I guess the only caveat I would put on that is, make sure your surveyor looks at it and he runs it by Dennis, our town engineer. Cause on top of Rich's recommendation, we're also gonna seek the town engineer, cause he's been involved in this, so we wanted to just make sure that he knows.
And he might be able to guide you or say, oh yeah, I didn't take that into consideration or whatever, make a recommendation back to us.
So do we wanna make that?
So do we want to make that motion, so they know how much money they're going to come up with?
Well, we just, we told five thousand, right?
But that needs to be in the motion, if we're going to do that.
We can make the motion next week.
Next week, just so they have an idea of what. Bring in the receipt next week, that way we've got the receipt next week, we have it all filed.
Probably even have the bond paperwork by next week, too.
Okay, so we'll revisit, you can put them on the agenda, you open next week at seven o'clock?
Yes, I think.
So we'll see you next week, seven o'clock.
Okay. Appreciate your willingness.
Thanks for coming in.
Do you want to make the remarks with Dennis and all that? Do you want to do anything?
I'll talk with Dennis.
Graham.
Good evening.
You want to, say, sign up there, or? No, I just don't want the door closed, so people.
Yeah, it says.
Or just take down the non-public site.
We ran that last week.
Hello, I'm Debbie Powers from the Heritage Commission. I'm going to discuss something that I should have had done for you this evening, but will be done this week, we're asking for CLG grant. The grant will hundred percent fund a application to put the Plain Cemetery on the National Register. We believe that this is important and has been identified as a good thing to do, we saw it in the Envision Kingston Charets, it's now in the master plan. We've had several conversations with the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, and this is all pertaining to bringing in the whole charrette idea of, you know, repurposing the downtown village area, making it so that we can draw in, you know, people from outside, maybe, and encourage some, some growth. So, again, this grant is just to hire consultants, getting a cemetery on the registry is a very difficult, one of the more difficult things to get on. We have, as I said, have had the discussions with the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, saying that they also think that this is probably a viable cemetery, because one, it's old, two, we have Josiah Bartlett there, and other, you know, notable things that went on, like the distemper outbreak years ago, also different stone, stone hedges, different tombstone styles, so it's a really important piece, but again, we would need support in, in, in proceeding that, proceeding with that application. It's a hundred percent grant, we've gotten two quotes in. Well, let me start at the beginning, back in November, we sent to the certified local government, who is a division of the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, and said, we'd like to apply for a grant, this is what we'd like to apply for, they came back, said, fine, so we took it upon ourselves to put the grant together, we've gotten a couple of quotes from, from May, who did our New Hampshire, our, our new chapter for the New Hampshire Resources, Natural Resources, and, and we also talked to Lynn, who is a local preservationist from the next town, Alder. So I'm coming here to ask you, to tell you about it, one, ask for a signature next week, once the application is approved, or if you want, you can say that I can sign the application, you'd have to give me permission, otherwise, we'd look for Mark to do so. So that was my quick blurb about it, can I answer any questions?
So how much is, how much is the consultant to?
We've gotten two quotes in, one was about forty-five hundred, and the other one was seven thousand. We would, you know, they asked for one to two quotes, we'll put in the one for the seven thousand, and then, of course, it still would have to go to the normal bidding process.
And what does that forty-five to seven thousand dollars do?
They, they prepare the application for the, to the National Registry, they gather all the information, there's quite a bit, especially with the cemetery, Lynn actually sent me documentation on how they got a cemetery in Exeter on it, and its volumes, and a lot of information. So that's why we didn't feel that, like we did the, the one for the state for the, for the bandstand, that was a piece of cake, it wasn't a lot. This is a much more intense application, and again, you know, CLG is offering the hundred percent funding for it.
Hundred percent funding for the, for the consultant fee?
Right, that's all the fee, I mean, we'll have to make copies and mail it, you know, but we might have to ask someone, you know, like a sexton or something, to walk them through, so we will, we might have some costs, but I don't think that it'd be significant. If, if the person who's doing it, you know, wants more information, they might ask the sexton for a.
So if the grant was awarded, would they pay the consultant directly, or is the town obligated to pay them, and they reimburse the town?
That's a good question. I think they pay the town, BKS, they pay the town, and then we would pay the consultant from the funds, kind of like the, oh, go ahead.
Could I ask, so let's say we get the grant, and the Plain Cemetery goes on the National Historic Register, does that change anything that we are obligated to do as far as maintaining it, or anything like that?
One is, we can churn down the grant, if, you know, once we get it, you have still that option to say, no, we don't want it, we thought we did, but we don't, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, it's a cemetery, and it's, the worst thing that can happen with any of these registries is, if you want to change something and it doesn't fit their codes, you get off the registry. There's nothing else, you just are no longer listed on the registry.
They're not going to say you have to hand push it with an old mower, or we're going to have to fix so many stones every year, or anything like that?
And this, oh, I'm so glad you mentioned that, because that was my other point, if we get this status, then we know that there's grants out there that will fund like half of the, you know, price of fixing headstones and things like that, which, this gives us opportunity to get monies, grant monies in for supporting the cemetery, you know, the projects that want to be, and we, and the gravestones, I mean, we've had that in our budget before, it's not cheap to repair those gravestones. So here's another opportunity for Kingston to get into the whole grants opportunities that are out there. Again, we're trying to move things in slowly, you know, we don't have a lot left that the town owns that can be put on the registry. We also talked about maybe doing these buildings, you know, like the Tramp House, the old fire building, the cobblestone, the barn for sure, just so you know, we're going to be looking at a barn grant this year, too, for an assessment grant, but, you know, the cemetery is certainly something we could, it won't be easy to get it on, because they require a lot of documentation, but it would be a great thing to have on, it really sticks out, people do seek out things like cemeteries to, to come and look at.
Phil is the town sexton, can you speak to it at all?
Ernie had brought this up two weeks ago, I guess the only question I had is, so there was a family plot, it was like an eighteen, early eighteen hundreds gravestone, and it had broken, and the family had replaced it with just a modern piece of granite that they had done on their own dime, would that be in conflict with this registry? Because I, that's really the only thing that I saw as a potential heritage, because it wasn't like period authentic, I mean, it was similar in width and everything, but it was modern materials and modern engraving and everything.
I can't answer that question, I don't know if they get that specific, that, that it would be, something like that would change it. It is a cemetery, and I believe there's still plots that could, it's not full.
Well, there are family plots.
Right, exactly.
So no one's really going to be putting up a new gravestone, I'm just saying, as families own them, they have the right to put up.
You know, I can, I can find that more specifically out, because my first, on first blush, I would say, no, it wouldn't matter, but honestly, I, I don't know the answer, especially if it's already done, but going forward, that's a very good question, what takes you to be knocked off the registry?
Yeah, other than that, I mean, I couldn't really think of anything that, because it is closed to any new interments, it's not going to be a new huge polished, you know, granite stone in there, that's the contrast, but I have seen a couple in there where the family's taken it upon themselves to replace stones.
Yeah.
And they don't, they're not period authentic, but there's, they're there.
Yeah, but I, I can find out that answer, because there's no point in accepting the grant money, if that's the case, if we already know.
Well, I think it'd be a small thing, it's just something to be aware of, and I think the trustees should probably be right in on that, but other than that, I, again, I think it's a great thing, and I, not trying to sharpshoot, yeah, I was just thinking, that might be the one thing that could run us in conflict with them, but otherwise, I think it's a good idea.
I'd make the motion, but my question is, do we want to allow the Heritage Commission Chair to sign, or our chair?
Would it be monies taken from the Heritage Commission's fund, and then it would be reimbursed to the Heritage Commission when we get our grant?
We don't expect to spend any funds, you know, I, we can, I think we can actually ask the state, and I'll, or, excuse me, CLG to directly pay that person, too.
That would be the preference, because.
The preference, yes.
Technically, I think if, it, it does create, sometimes it creates issues when we don't have a specific line in our budget of, and a lot of departments have offsetting grant lines in their budgets, that they typically get charged against, and even though the money comes in, it's not designed to replenish that.
Right.
And that effect is that it, it's at no cost to the town, but from.
Because of that budget implication.
Budgeting basis, it creates an issue.
And based on what Kevin just asked, I think you should sign the contract, based on what we did with Conservation Commission a few weeks ago.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the application for a grant for the Plain Cemetery, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Thank you, and we'll have it to you for your next Monday meeting.
Good, thanks for coming.
It's not due till the fourteenth. I just wanted, while we're here, I believe, Susan, you already discussed with him that we'll be opening the warrant for the fund.
I put something in your packet there, and I think I mentioned it before, but I'm not sure if I talked to you, when that petition for heritage money came in this year, I already had a place saver on the warrant, and I didn't notice that last part of the last sentence was a little bit different this year, so it needs to match the petition, so it delivered it, they'll have to come up in its ass to change that, I don't believe it changes anything.
It doesn't change, really, the intent of the.
The money or where it's actually going, it's.
I think the original wording made people think we could just use it on properties, and so we went more to the classic wording.
I'll just speak to it for a quick second, because you weren't here, but, you know, we had to decide who was in favor, who wasn't, I voted against enough, because I don't support what you're doing, I appreciate everything you're doing, it's just when you stop adding up everything on the thing, I thought maybe this is the one year we just put the brakes on it, and that's the only reason I did it.
I, you know, I think we all understood that, it doesn't mean I'm not going to make another ploy with the, you know, for, ploy for your vote, play for your vote, when we redo the wording, because it is kind of new wording, so it gives another opportunity, and I will, we will speak to it again, especially because in light of what's coming up, if we look at just the cemetery alone, the town has no say over anything, and, you know, well, the election, of course, but when, say it happens, and Ms. the Chinburger property does own that building, we want to have the money to go in and say, work with us to get a preservation easement on this, not that we're concerned about Chin, what they're going to do, but maybe the next buyer, you know, we want to make sure that we get some protections in, that's the kind of money that we can use out of the heritage fund. Again, when I talked today about the grant monies that are potential for the cemetery and the headstones, again, there's money that we might have, if we can get a real quick grant, that we'd have money to match from the heritage fund. So just building it up to take advantage of opportunities when they arrive in a year, because I still remember very clearly some words said to me a few years ago, don't come up to us with surprises, we want you to budget for things, and this is our, like, little safety net, well, you know, that if something's in the best interest of the town, we have the funds to do it.
So I got a quick question, Susan, are you saying that we didn't put it in as it was presented to us by petition?
Correct, I mean, yeah, that, that part, that last sentence is wrong, because that's how, that's what it read last year, so when it came in, I counted the ballots, I looked at the money, and I didn't notice that sentence, so it needs to say exactly what it said on the petition, which I was.
And this, this represents what it said? This doesn't represent what it said? This represents the prior one?
Yes, on the other side is the actual petition, I copied for you, so you can see what it should say.
And our moderator will be notified of it, so we'll.
Yeah, I've already talked with her, and she said, just do it and deliver it, so I was going to try to do it at that other meeting, and I just sent her a copy of all that, too, so she'll be aware it's coming.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in. I'd like to, not that we have a great number of public here, but we'll open it up for public comment, if anybody would like to make one.
Should open that door.
Ernie, Dad, Rich.
Watch the court type of the audience's position on camera before the limited session.
Uh.
I think this should be.
Sure. So there seems, there's a warrant article that the selectmen put in to change the road agent's position from elected to appointed, which we're all aware of, but there's some confusion out in the public, like, it's some way for you guys to shaft me and get rid of me. I don't think that's the case, because we've talked about that, and I'm the one that brought it forward to the board, recommending that, that you change that, and some of the reasons, the road agent's position has changed a lot in the last thirty-plus years since I first took the job, a lot more jobs have been given to me at this position, if you choose, if the voters choose to change it, which I recommend, to an appointed position, it gives the selectmen a chance to hire someone from outside that's perhaps qualified for the job, not that there might not be a, a resident that's eligible for the job, they would definitely be able to come to the select and say, I think I can do that job, and I'm a town resident, and I would think that if they qualify, you would give, give it to the town resident first, but you would at least have the chance to look at the applicants and make that decision. I'm going to be gone one way or the other in a couple of years, you know, unlike Briggs, he thinks he's going to stay chief of police forever, I'm, I'm going to get done, like I said, one way or the other. So I'm recommending it, I'm the one that brought it forward, this is not, you know, the selectmen against me, I just want to get that out there in the public, we'll be discussing it at the deliberate session, and the voters have a, have a choice to vote on it, but I'm recommending it, I think it's, the town would be better served if a qualified candidate could be found to replace me, you know, I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but the job has changed a lot in thirty, almost thirty-five years. Presently, to be an elected road agent in the town of Kingston, the only qualifications are, you have to live in town, be a registered voter, you can give the town clerk a dollar so you can put your name on the ballot, and if you're the lead vote getter, I mean, you get one vote more than the next guy, you're the road agent, that's the only qualifications you need. You know, by the way, the salary's set, it's not arbitrary, it's not something you guys can decide, it's voted on, it's passed the town budget, the day I leave, the next person in line that is hired by the town is guaranteed that salary. next person in line that is hired by the town is guaranteed that salary, no matter what their qualifications are. So hopefully the guy that replaced, the person, I say guy, old school, but the person that replaces me is qualified and can do the job. And I think it should be the board of selectmen that makes that choice. Obviously, the voters have the, if they don't like your choice, they can vote you out of office the next time. You know, that's, that's what I think should happen and that's, you know, I just want to get that out there because I've heard, you know, I've already heard from people, what's going on? What's going on between you and the selectmen? They're trying to get rid of you. So. Yeah. Rest assured, that's not the intention. You're fully aware of what it is. And, you know, even if we had qualified people who currently hold positions with the highway department, they may not be even eligible because they don't all live in town.
Right.
So it definitely, it's kind of old school having it that way. It goes back to the days when, you know, there was very few employees. It wasn't a major department. And a lot of towns still have an elected road agent. Most towns, they're not even town direct employees. They have their own construction crew and they do their work and build a town for that as opposed to having its own department. But certainly, you've done an excellent job for the town. It is certainly not our intention to replace you. And it's just looking forward into the future that we need a professional. We've been fortunate with you, Rich, getting continuing education and years of experience. And this is to ensure that we hopefully would be, when you do decide to go, that we would be in the position to hire a professional and somebody who has what it takes to continue the operation at the, as the road agent and everything else you do. Yep. Just like I said, Mark, I just want to get out there because Appreciate that. Scuttlebutt.
What I would say is I appreciate you having the foresight to bring it to our attention the way it's set up. This is a safety net for the town and that wouldn't take effect till your term expires in 2021. And even then, it's my intent that to just change to a contract if you want it. It would be in your choice. You've been a long-term road agent, plot vote getter, I might add, on the ballot. And the job is yours as long as you want it.
Sing. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, under all business. Some discussion on the articles seven, eight, and nine from the, that are on the ballot. We had an emergency meeting, I guess it was what, last Sunday? Maybe it was the Sunday before, I don't
Yeah, 26.
Where it was, we talked about removing those articles from the warrant. That didn't happen. We've got additional information from the Secretary of State and the DRA stating that now that they have been posted on the warrant at the deliberative session, they cannot be removed. And the, basically, I think the alterations that can be made to them is just money amounts. It can't, it can't change the intent of the articles.
Right. Make minor adjustments, change money amounts. That's it.
Okay.
I would say as one of the persons that put the articles forward and recommend them, the intent to the voters is clear what the majority of the selectmen want to do with it. So I think they, they'll be pretty clear on it. The fire department was going to educate them as well that we would take 2.6 million out of the previously established infrastructure fund and apply that to offset the bond. There has been some legal wranglings between the DRA and everything else. This is the exact same language it was put forward to the voters and they supported on when we built the library. So town council says we should go forward what we have and we'll deal with the stuff after, but it's pretty clear what the intent of the selectmen is, that we're only taking 2.6 million, that the bond will be reestablished the exact same way. So I think we should just leave them the way they are because I thought maybe if we put the timelines in there, when the money goes out and comes in, that would satisfy DRA. It turns out that's not the case. But ultimately, we're being straightforward with the people. We're going to take 2.6 million out, offset the bond by two point, by 2.6 million and then put the money back in the fund.
Anything else on that?
No.
Okay, new business. The issue came up about having a candidates night?
So there are three contested elections for races or positions. So I feel it's in everyone's best interest to have these candidates nights. Even if someone's running unopposed, at least voters have a chance to meet someone and make their decisions from there. So that would be the first thing. I think we should do a candidates night. But I guess my question would be, and I'm willing to offer to do it or coordinate it, but obviously, since the moderator is someone who's running in a contested election, they wouldn't be able to moderate the candidates night. So.
Maybe we could ask Rick Russman to fill in being the school moderator?
I'm saying either that or we have a new candidate for moderator who's running unopposed. We could also have her fill in that role as well. It's the board's pleasure.
I'm all about having candidates night. I think that's number one is priority. I think we should pick, whether Tuesday or Wednesday night, the town hall's available, do that and advertise it. I would think, I would go with Rick Russman first for a pick. And then the only reason I say, I know there is a candidate for, but that might be on fairly contested anyways, but I would say Rick Russman first and then we could decide who would moderate if Rick Russman isn't available.
Okay. Would two weeks prior to the election, a Wednesday, two weeks prior to the election, does that sound about right? We were kind of under the gun last time, but typically it's two weeks before.
Sure. That sounds good. What would that date be?
14 minus?
March 14th, Wednesday would be February 26th?
Do we have anything, any committees that meet on Wednesday?
Wednesday's usually a good day. I have to check, double check downstairs, but.
HGC is the only one.
They're on Wednesday, but not at the end of the month.
Yeah, 7:00. What's that?
7:00.
She said February 26th.
It's Wednesday night. And Susan, would we be able to host that, so candidates night? I thought we'd fill just long
Posted. Yeah, I can post it. I thought you said hosted.
Hosted or posted?
I'll coordinate to get donuts here and coffee and all that and get the, I'll coordinate with Rich to have the room set up and I'll talk. Can you get over to Rick?
Yes.
So Susan, you'll see that it gets posted on the board and?
Yep.
And then the only, the only other question was the moderator for the election, but that's been answered.
Apparently, Ellie can still serve as moderator at this election even though she's on the ballot. I think the rule, I pulled out some information, but basically she can't count votes, but she can preside as she normally would.
Okay. All right. See, there was a question. Do you want to address that, Dawn, on the?
That's, that's an issue where the electrical inspector said to be in compliance, but they need to put that additional panel.
Okay, so basically, we got a complaint from a resident. We weren't sure if they were going to come in tonight, but we have it on our agenda here just so everybody is aware of what it is, who was going to install a generator. Is everybody familiar with it or not?
Yeah, Tom failed it because it was undersized.
Okay. And they weren't hooking up the panel correctly? They didn't want to put in the sub-panel?
I haven't spoken to Tom, but the, what I heard was basically the generator is undersized and power the entire panel, so a sub-panel needs to be installed.
That's correct. I talked, I talked to the complaining party and I talked to Tom and the individual who had filed the complaint is going to be calling me on Wednesday, at which time I will inform him what the electrical inspector told.
Yeah. The only thing I'd say is you have the liaison inspectors or?
Last time I checked.
Yeah, so I should kick it over to?
The guy knows who that's right.
That's, I'm fine with that. You can do that. I just, again, I have full faith in our electrical inspector. If he fails something, it's typically a very solid and compelling reason why he did so. So I, I'm more than happy to let anyone else look into it, but I stand by Tom on that.
Okay, committee liaison reports. Nothing here.
I think Paul's situation is resolved, although it was brilliant legislative work by our elected body of the state regarding the retirement system. But one thing Paul is looking into for the rec program is an after-school program. He's meeting up with the Austin 17 house and I think a couple other local groups and potentially having an after-school program on a more steady basis. He's just doing exploration on it. This would obviously be self-funded as the rest of the rec programs are, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up. If he has more information, he'll bring it before the board so we can discuss it further. As far as the inspectors go, we're continuing to work through some issues and it's going to be brought up to the planning board because they handle driveway permits, but as the gentlemen who came in here this evening show, it is my recommendation to the planning board that we require a driveway permit on all driveways within town, whether it's off a state road or not, because the state only cares about their right-of-way off of the state highway. And then it refers back to the town is something that we've discovered. So that's going to be discussed. I've talked to Rich St. Lere about it, not fully, but just kind of on the surface. I just want to make the select board aware that that's what I'm going to be recommending to the planning board as they rep.
Okay.
For budget committee, just remind the voters that this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. is the start of deliberative session. Encourage anybody, there's 28 warrant articles on the ballot this year, as well as an operating budget just slightly over $6 million. If anyone has any questions, anyone would like answers, the deliberative session is the opportunity to come and get those questions answered. Don't know how long it'll go. It shouldn't be that bad. And if you can't make it on Saturday, please reach out to the selectmen's office or any one of the five selectmen. If you have questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. On, for the fire department, there was two openings. The chief, Graham Halloran, has announced that he did hire one person so far and they accepted it as a familiar face at the town of Kingston. That is Stephen Turner will be returning to the town of Kingston as a full-time firefighter, paramedic. And the other one, he still has interviews scheduled for next week.
Anything else? Okay, public comments, since we have no public, we don't need that. A letter for DOT, Susan wrote the letter. This was pertaining, was based on the discussion Chief Briggs brought forward. It's to Ms. Daugherty of the New Hampshire DOT at the last workshop meeting on this project, which was held in Kingston on January 23rd, 2020. It was brought to our attention that part of the potential water treatment area for the project will impact the business at 21 Route 125, map R3 lot 2. The owners of this business are currently planning to expand. If the water treatment area for the product, project goes in the proposed area at the back of this property, it would make this expansion impossible and possibly cause the company to go out of business. We hope you can find a workable alternative to this portion of the plan that will not adversely impact any of our business owners.
Make a motion to approve and send a letter from the Kingston Board of Selectmen to the New Hampshire DOT.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Also the reps and senators are going to be sent in as well.
Make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of January 27, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, public and non-public, January 27, 2020, as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Where were we on the Kingston Days application facility use? Were we holding up on that?
There was some question. I think it was about their bank account. I don't think we have any information. Did you get anything more?
No, there has to be some change in that because of the way that
The way the money's
According to Just working on that.
Okay, is that, so what's the board's pleasure on this application for facility use for June, July 27th to August 4th?
I think you can sign that. The other part's being worked through.
Make a motion to approve the use of planes for Kingston Days Committee for 2020. One, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Signify by signing this paper.
Do you want to talk about?
Yes. Bring that up, please. Anything else?
Yes. John's Truck and Auto has willingly set up a bin for white goods and a few other things. I went there last week to dump something, a range, and it was basically full of carpet, trash, everything. People were putting all kinds of things there, taking advantage of it. They were very nice, came out to my truck with foregloves, took the range off my truck, helped everything. But what I think we should do, not that it would do a lot of good, but we should put a sign up there saying what is accepted, what is not accepted, just so if somebody catches somebody dumping there, they can't just say, I didn't know, you know, have it posted.
Illegally equipped the fines for illegal dumping in the town of Kingston.
Yeah, we could do that too.
In conjunction with that. So if we put a trail camera up and we catch them, they'll know unless they have to pay.
You know, and it's probably not going to do any good until we fence area off and it may come to that eventually, put some kind of small fence there just so they can only use it during hours. But I've seen trailers going in there on the weekends just with everything on them.
There, yeah. They're getting, it's getting a lot of use of the dumpsters. Good use of, well, they're not dumping, it's full. Yeah, they're not dumping in the woods. The amount of illegal dumping has gotten back considerably.
I think we should at least invest in a sign. What, yeah, like Richard, Dawn, come up, what did you say? Is ours applicable stuff? What penalties are for, you know, putting illegal stuff in this dumpster constitutes illegal dumping, whatever you got it right.
Okay.
And I thank John's Auto Trucking for doing this because this is the problem. I figured it was going to happen. Hopefully this will curtail it. I think it's at least an attempt. But I thank them again for what they're doing.
Like I say, they were very nice, went out of the way to help me get a range off the truck and took it right in and crushed it. So they're there to help. Sad that people were taking advantage. people are taking advantage of it.
Is there any non-publics? Or do we, can I make a motion adjourned?
I would second that. I just, I just have one quick leaving thing I want to talk you about.
Under what guise? Legal?
Under legal, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, that'll conclude the televised portion of our meeting. Thank you for watching. Have a good night. Don't forget that it's the deliberative session this Saturday, coming Saturday at the town hall at 9:00 a.m. Thank you, good night.
Motion to go on non-public, 91A, 003, Roman.